Board will now come. Sharita, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Present.
Alderman Bosley.
Present.
Alderwoman Evans.
Present.
Alderman Page.
Present.
Alderwoman Negracia. Alderman Colder. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther.
Here.
Alderman Laffey.
Here.
Alderman Stevens.
Here.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Present.
Alderwoman Howard.
Present.
Alderwoman Green.
Present.
Alderman Oldenburg. Alderwoman Peel.
Here.
Alderman Todd.
Present.
Alderwoman Davis.
Present.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Present.
Alderman Bacaro.
Present.
Alderman Orion. Alderman Con. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Thank you. Thank you. Alderwoman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Grass.
Present.
President Ballmer.
Present.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Negracia. Alderman Colder.
Here.
Alderwoman Rice.
Present.
Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Orion.
Here.
Twenty-three, present, you have corn.
Thank you very much, Sharita. The corn being present, uh, we will be letting prayer, uh, I don't see Reverend Pastor John Watson, are you with us? No, with that, I will, uh, lead us in prayer then. Almighty God, source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdoms in our conclusions. Amen. We will suspend with our regular order of business to take up line item twenty-one, second reading of resolutions, committee reports and adoptions, madam clerk.
Report from the engrossment rules, resolution and credential committee, newly elected Alderwoman Laura Keys of the twenty-first ward and newly elected Alderwoman Nora Walker of, Norma Walker of the twenty-second ward.
All right, Alvin from the seventh, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, the rules, credentials and engrossment committee met on Thursday, uh, and by unanimous motions approved the, uh, certificate of elections and the credentials of Alderwoman Elect, um, Laura Keys from the twenty-first ward and Alderwoman Elect Norma Walker from the twenty-second ward. Um, I don't know if I can do this in one motion to approve these or two, I'll defer to you or the clerk on that.
No, we will be doing both at once, sir.
Okay, uh, then I would make a motion, uh, for the full board to approve the certificate of elections and the credentials of Alderwoman Elect Laura Keys and Norma Walker.
All right, uh, moved by the Alvin from the seventh, uh, I heard the Alvin from the nineteenth and multiple others, but we'll take the Alvin from the nineteenth. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, congratulations, Alderwoman Keys and Alderwoman Walker. We will now return to our regular order of business, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
It's, uh, present, Alderwoman.
This is real, real.
Alderman Bosley.
Present.
Alderwoman Evans.
Present.
Alderman Page.
Present.
Alderwoman Negracia. Alderman Colder.
Here.
Alderwoman Rice.
Present.
Alderman Gunther.
Here.
Alderman Laffey.
Here.
Alderman Stevens.
Here.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Present.
Alderwoman Howard.
Present.
Alderwoman Green.
Present.
Alderman Oldenburg. Alderwoman Peel.
Present.
Alderman Todd.
Present.
Alderwoman Davis.
Present.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Present.
Alderwoman Keys.
Present.
Alderwoman Walker.
Present.
Alderman Bacaro.
Uh, present, I was clapping for the other ones, I'm sorry.
Alderman Orion.
Here.
Alderman Con.
Present.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Here.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Grass.
Here.
President Ballmer.
Present.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Negracia. Alderman Oldenburg. Twenty-five, present, you have corn.
Thank you, Sharita. And welcome to Alderwoman Keys and Alderwoman Walker, enjoy this day, this is the most popular you'll ever be.
Thank you.
It all goes the other way from here.
That's so true.
All right. Inte- introduction of, uh, honored guests. See any hands up?
Aye.
Usually the new people go first.
Well, I, I, I'm waiting for hands to come up, so thank you, I'll be running the meeting, Alderman Bacaro, thank you. All right. So, Alderman Walker, would you have any guests you'd like to honor today?
I do that.
All right, well, thank you very much, we're gonna love you then. Short meetings. Alderwoman Keys.
Good morning, Mr. President and members of the board. Um, as honored guests today, and I hope that they're on, uh, I know for sure, uh, my, uh, husband and boyfriend of thirty-four years, committee man James Keys, uh, I'm very happy to have him here with me today. Um, I believe that, uh, my, my son and, and his fiancee in Germany, uh, are watching, I hope so, Philip and Nicola. Um, uh, Amber Cole, who has been a, a sister soldier, ride or die, uh, supporter, I, I appreciate her, her presence, uh, being here today, and I, I believe that probably is it, I don't know about my, my other, uh, sons, I know they're at work and have other stuff going on. But, uh, but I'm very happy to be here today, and I thank you all so much.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. Next on our list, Alderwoman from the twenty-seventh, you're recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President and members of the board, I just wanted to, uh, thank my ride or die, always having my back, uh, Nathan Boyd.
All right, thank you very much. Alvin, Alvin from the fifth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board, uh, it is my, uh, honor to recognize as my honored guest, Mr. Freddie Lee James and his lover, lovely wife Deborah. Uh, you will know them from Freddie Lee's gourmet sauces. I'm happy to report that they have a new manufacturing facility under construction where in the fabulous fifth ward. So, uh, just wanted to give them a shout out and, uh, welcome them as my honored guests.
All right, thank you, sir, welcome to all you. Very good sauce also. Alvin from the fourteenth, you are recognized.
Yes, I'd like to, uh, I'm honored to present my honored guest Catherine Birch, constituent and good friend. And welcome her today as she listens into the meeting, thank you.
Thank you very much. Alvin from the ninth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, I'd like to have as my honored guest today, uh, Ms. Vanessa Cooksey, the tireless leader of the Regional Arts Commission. And, uh, thank them and everyone involved, uh, on a wonderful, uh, music at the intersection, uh, last weekend, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir, welcome to everyone. Alvin from the twenty-third, you are recognized.
As always, I'd like to have my good friend Greg Meyer as my honored guest.
All right, thank you, sir. Welcome Greg. Alderwoman from the fourth, you are recognized.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to honor and recognize my grandson, uh, Ziat and his mom, uh, that's visiting me this weekend, also my daughter, uh, Dwayne, who's also visiting me from Kansas City, and her and Ian, my future son-in-law.
All right, so.
So they're all here for the great balloon race festivity.
All right, so it's Dwayne and Gwen, huh?
Yes, what, but it's spelled differently, so we would know who they were referring to.
All right.
As you can see, Dwyndaland, hers is just Dwayne, D W Y N N.
Okay.
Clear that up.
All right, thank you very much, welcome to all, Alvin from the nineteenth, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I'd like to have as my honored guest, all residents, business owners, visitors of the city of St. Louis. Thank you for tolerating us during these perilous times, thank you for remaining citizens. Thank you for coming and visiting and spending money so we can collect sales tax. Thank you for being a part of the city of St. Louis.
All right, thank you, Alderwoman, and Alvin from the second, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board, I would like to have as my honored guest, um, Ms. Rush and Ms. Newsome, they are two pre-K teachers at Nance Elementary. I would also like to have all of the city, um, SLPS teachers, support staff, nurses, uh, counselors, crossing guards, custodians as my honored guests, as well as all the students who returned this year.
All right, thank you very much. All right, anyone else? No one, all right. With that, we'll move to approval of the minutes. Alvin from the twenty-fifth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, I move that we approve the minutes from our meeting Friday, July fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by the Alvin from the twenty-fifth, second by the Alvin from the fourth. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the, of the agenda has been placed in the audit and mailbox. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for appointment to the developmental disabilities resources commission. The appointment of Mr. Christopher, Christopher Faber, who resides in the ninth ward, I respectfully request your approval of the appointment sincerely to Shorba O. Jones, mayor.
All right, Alvin from the ninth, you're recognized on the mayor's appointment.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, I'd like to move that we accept the mayor's appointment to the developmental disabilities resource commission.
Entertained a second?
Second.
All right, the move by the Alvin from the ninth, second by the Alvin from the fourth, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion, motion carries. We will dispense with line item seven, uh, board bills for, for, would anyone like to take any board bills or resolutions off or any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to remove anything from the informal calendars? All right. First ring of board bills.
Board Bill Seventy-seven sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus, an ordinance to protect the public health, safety, and welfare by prohibiting the use of alleys by operators of motor vehicles for drive-through traffic in the following neighborhoods, Kings East, I'm sorry, Kingsway East, Kingsway West, Penrose, Mark Twain, requiring the posting of those allowed to use, to use of the alley contain the penalty clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill Seventy-eight sponsored by Alderwoman Howard, an ordinance establishing a two-way stop site at the intersection of Macklin Avenue and Neosho Street regulating all traffic traveling northbound and southbound on Macklin Avenue at the intersection of Macklin Avenue and Neosho Street and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill Seventy-nine sponsored by Alderwoman Howard pursuant to ordinance number seven zero three 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 as amended by ordinance number seven one three nine four, an ordinance directing the director of streets to install speed humps to calm the flow of traffic on the forty-nine hundred block of Neosho Street, forty-three hundred block of Wilcox Avenue, forty-four hundred block to forty-six hundred block of Wilcox Avenue, and the forty-nine hundred block to the forty-one hundred block of Alfred Avenue. Board Bill Eighty sponsored by Alderman Page, an ordinance pertaining to the permitting of surface parking lots as defined herein and to be codified as section eight point seven zero point zero one zero and a new section eight point seven zero point zero three five of the revised code of the city of St. Louis establishing additional requirements for the same and contain the severability, severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill Eighty-one sponsored by Alderman Todd pursuant to ordinance number seven zero three 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 as amended by ordinance number seven one three nine four, an ordinance directing the director of streets to install speed humps to calm the flow of traffic on the forty-two fifty block of Enright Avenue, forty-one hundred block of McPherson Avenue, eighteen hundred block of Prairie Avenue, in front of eighteen nineteen Prairie Avenue and thirty-nine hundred block and four thousand block of Westminster Place. Board Bill Eighty-two sponsored by Alderman Bacaro, an ordinance directing the director of the city of St. Louis Street Department to install and implement an emergency vehicle traffic signal preemption system. Board Bill Eighty-three sponsored by Alderman Laffey, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated March twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two for seventy-seven twenty-six through seventy-seven thirty Virginia Avenue area. Board Bill Eighty-four sponsored by Alderwoman Howard, an ordinance establishing a two-way stop site at the intersection of Neosho Street and Newport Avenue regulating all traffic traveling eastbound and westbound on Neosho Street at the intersection of Neosho Street and Newport Avenue and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill Eighty-five sponsored by Alderwoman Howard pursuant to ordinance number seven zero three 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 as amended by ordinance number seven one three nine four, an ordinance directing the director of streets to install speed humps to calm the flow of traffic on the forty-nine hundred block of Neosho Street, forty-three hundred block of Wilcox Avenue, forty-four hundred block to forty-six hundred block of Wilcox Avenue, forty-nine hundred block to forty-one hundred block of Alfred Avenue, forty-one hundred block of Neosho Street between the intersection of Neosho and Newport Avenue and Neosho and Ray Avenue, forty-one fifty block of Neosho Street between the intersection of Neosho Street and Agnes Avenue, and Neosho Street and Berrymont Avenue, the fifty-thirty block of Mur- Murdoch Avenue and the fifty-twenty block of Murdoch Avenue. Board Bill Eighty-six sponsored by Alderman Todd, an ordinance authorizing the name, the naming of baseball and softball, softball fields located in Forest Park, the Elmer M. Ote Baseball and Softball Field. Board Bill Eighty-seven sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd, an ordinance directing the consolidation of the city of St. Louis Division of Police and the St. Louis Lambert International Airport Police Department into a single municipal, municipal police force under the administration of the Department of Public Safety. Of the city of St. Louis to be known as the Consolidated Police Division, which shall be commonly referred to as the St. Louis Metropolitan Metropolitan Police Department and the, and directing that the Consolidated Police Division be renamed into six, I'm sorry, be reorganized into six police bureaus that shall report directly to the police, uh, to the commissioner of police. That is extent of first reading of board bills.
Thank you, Sharita, reference to committee.
The Streets Committee Board Bill Seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-four, and eighty-five, to the Neighborhood Development Committee Board Bill Eighty-three, to the Parks Committee Board Bill Eighty-six, and to Public Safety Board Bill Eighty-seven, that is extent of reference to committee.
All right, second reading, report of standing committees.
We have none.
We will dispense with line item fourteen, perfection consent.
We have none.
All right, uh, we'll skip over line item sixteen, board bills for perfection.
Board Bill Fifty-two and Board Bill Sixty-seven.
All right. And third reading consent. Is what, where, that should have been a third reading consent, I'm sorry. His perfection was, uh, fifty-five was put on the informal. So thirty, third reading consent is fifty-two and sixty-seven.
Yes, sir.
All right. Alvin from the twenty-fifth, you're recognized for the motion on the third reading consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move that we adopt our third reading consent calendar.
Second.
All right, it's been a dot, uh, moved by Alvin from the twenty-fifth, second by Alvin from the ninth. Any discussion? Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Thank you. Alderwoman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderwoman Negracia. Alderman Colder.
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Laffey.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg. Alderwoman Peel.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Can't hear you.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys.
abstain.
Alderwoman Walker.
Abstain.
Alderman Bacaro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Con.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Grass.
Aye.
President Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Negracia. Alderman Oldenburg. Twenty-three, aye votes and two abstains.
Thank you, Sharita, by your vote, you have sustained the motion of the Alvin from the twenty-fifth and third read and finally passed the aforementioned board bills. Uh, third reading, report of engrossment and final passage.
Board Bill Fifty-two and Board Bill Sixty-seven.
All right, all other business being suspended, the president will in open session fix their signature heretofore to the end that these may become law. All right. Alvin from the twenty-fifth, you're recognized on our courtesy resolutions calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move that we adopt our courtesy resolutions.
Entertained a second?
Second.
Second then.
All right, the move by the Alvin from the twenty-fifth, second by the Alvin from the fourteenth that we approve our courtesy resolutions calendar, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Let's go through all these quickly and. All right, first ring of resolutions.
Resolution Sixty-seven sponsored by Alderman Bosley, changing board of Alderman rules to increase the amount of postage stamps and expense funds for the, for board members.
All right, Alvin from the third, you're recognized for the first reading of resolution number sixty-seven.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, how are you today?
All right, good.
All right, um, I ask for unanimous consent.
Objection.
We have an objection. All right. Let me go, if we're going to, uh, would you like to refer this to me, sir, or would you like to suspend the rules?
Uh, you can refer it to committee.
All right, please make that motion.
I'd like to move that we send resolution, what is it, fifty-six?
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven, uh, to the rules committee.
All right, entertained a second?
Second.
All right, it's moved by Alvin from the third, second by Alvin from the eighth, that we assign board goal sixty-seven to the rules committee. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Madam clerk, please assign resolution sixty-seven to the rules committee.
Oh, noted.
All right, resolution one oh two.
Resolution one zero two sponsored by Alderman Todd, LRA violations of property maintenance ordinances.
All right, Alvin from the eighteenth, you are recognized for the first reading of resolution one zero two. Alvin from the eighteen.
Uh, here, uh, this bill is a straightforward, this resolution is a straightforward.
Alvin, either night, he's asked for unanimous consent or refer to committee, which, which would you?
I would like unanimous consent.
Objection.
We have an objection, would you like to?
I would like to have it sent to the, uh, Parks, uh, and environmental committee.
Uh, I believe this should actually go to the HUDs committee, sir.
Housing and herb, it has nothing to do, do with housing, this.
It's L R, it's, it's LRA violation, sir.
Okay, so I can't send it to, uh, the environment, cause it's the environment that is, uh, being, uh, that is.
Yeah, but the, we would, we, looking over this, we, uh, committee, with the staff, it's recommended that this will go to the HUDs committee, sir, but you can make your motions.
Okay, then, thank you very much.
Would, would you like to make a motion, sir?
I would like to make a motion that, uh, it goes to, uh, uh, I guess I have to make a motion that it goes to the HUDs committee.
Yes, sir.
Will I make a motion that goes to the HUDs committee?
Second.
All right, we have a motion from the Alvin from the eighteenth, second by the Alvin from the twenty-fifth and twenty-fourth. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Madam clerk, please sign resolution one zero two to the HUDs committee.
Oh, noted. Resolution one zero four sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook, SOHA Partners, ELSI, and the city of St. Louis, Enhanced Enterprise Zone.
Alvin from the second, you're recognized on the first reading of resolution one zero four.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, um, I would like to move, make a motion to send resolution one zero four to the HUDs committee.
Any objection?
Second.
Okay, we have a second, I didn't catch who gave the second.
Twenty-four.
All right, thank you very much, sir. It's been moved by Alvin from the second, second by the Alvin from the twenty-fourth, that we refer resolution one oh four to the HUDs committee, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, madam clerk, please assign resolution one zero four to the HUDs committee.
Oh, noted.
Resolution one oh five.
Resolution one zero five sponsored by President Ballmer, last day for the introduction of board bills for the twenty-two, twenty-three legislative session.
All right, Alvin from the nineteenth, you're recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President and members of the board, I ask for unanimous consent.
Hearing no objection? But, we have objection? All right. Alvin from the nineteenth, would you like to make a motion to send this to committee? Or would you like to suspend the rules?
I'd like to suspend the rules, please. I move that we suspend the. I'd like to suspend the rules, please. I move that we suspend the rules.
Okay. Sharita, please call the roll. I'm sorry, do we have a second on suspending the rules?
Yeah.
Second. Sure.
All right. We have motion from the nineteenth, I caught a second from the Alderman twenty-third. Sharita, please call the roll. Does voters to suspend the rules?
All the woman tires. All the woman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
All the woman Evan.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
All the woman Negracia. Alderman Calder. All the woman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Lappy.
Aye, sorry.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
All the woman Switzer.
Aye.
All the woman Howard.
Aye.
All the woman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg. All the woman Peel.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
All the woman Davis.
Aye.
All the woman Spencer.
Aye.
All the woman Keys.
Aye.
All the woman Walker.
Abstain.
Alderman Bacaro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Con.
Aye.
All the woman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
All the woman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Grass.
Aye.
President Ballmer.
Aye.
All the woman tires. All the woman Negracia. Alderman Calder. Alderman Odenberg. Twenty-four, I vote and one abstain.
All right, thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Uh, by your vote, we have agreed to suspend the rules for the introduction, resolution one oh five. Uh, Alderman from the nineteenth, you're recognized for a motion.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, but I wasn't, I was muted. What did you say, sir?
Uh, you, uh, now that we suspended the rules, uh, you'll have to make a motion to adopt one oh five.
All right, thank you. Uh, I move that we adopt resolution one oh five. Thank you.
Second, second.
All right, we have a motion from the Alderman from the nineteenth, second by the Alderman from the fourteenth. Please proceed, all the woman. Alderman from the nineteenth, please proceed.
I'm proceeding with a very, uh, I renew my motion.
Okay. Any discussion? We have, uh, hand up, Alderman from twenty-fifth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to take the opportunity to recognize that the resolution, uh, is established or being presented as, uh, established by our rules under rule number fifty-six. Um, the current session is supposed to end February third. Uh, the resolution is just, uh, simply, uh, establishing January thirteenth as the last day for first, uh, introduction of board bills. So I just, for those of you that might not have access to a computer to read the actual resolution, uh, you know, that's what we're, uh, discussing here before us.
Uh, thank you, sir. Actually, I picked January thirteenth because it's my birthday. That's the only reason.
Well, happy, uh, birthday in advance.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and no further discussion?
Previous roll.
Previous roll, yeah.
Hearing no objections to previous roll? We have adopted resolution one oh five. Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution one oh six.
Resolution one zero six, sponsored by Alderman Bacaro, Damian Cortez Baker Gun Violence Reduction.
Auburn for the twenty-third, you are recognized.
Um, can you, can the, uh, can you ever read, read the resolution for me, please?
Uh, certainly, Madam Clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution one zero six, Damian Cortez Baker Gun Violence Reduction, whereas on the morning of July third, twenty-twenty-two, in the City of St. Louis, twenty-five-year-old Damian Cortez Baker lost his life to gun violence. And whereas Damian Cortez Baker was an exceptional high school and college athlete, and off the field, he was a dedicated leader, mentor, and volunteer in his community. And the example set by Damian in his lifetime will continue to be of positive influence in the community. Whereas over the last fifty years, more Americans' lives have been lost to gun violence, and the careless possession and mishandling of firearms that have been lost in all, all of the wars that have been fought in the nation's history, and the result of recent KFF health policy analysis show that gunshots are now the number one cause of death by injury for children having surpassed, for children having surpassed the number of deaths resulting from mo- motor vehicle and deaths resulting from all other injuries combined. And whereas, in the St. Louis region, over the last ten years, eight hundred children have been injured by gunshot. And since July of twenty-twenty-two, sixty-four children have been injured and ten have died of gunshot, as this, this apportionate number of these children were poor, African-American and male. And whereas, by any reasonable an- analysis of violent crimes conducted in the City of St. Louis and beyond, it's shown that limiting source, limiting sources and opportunities for illegally obtaining firearms reduce the number of illegal firearms that have found their way into neighborhoods and used in the commission of violent crimes resulting in further decline in the security of neighborhoods and general well-being of residents. And whereas, a great majority of firearms recovered in the aftermath of violent crimes are to be found illegally obtained. Whereas, the City of St. Louis Board of Aldermen has found the surface parking lots by nature suffer greater instances of crime against patrons, theft, vandalism of vehicles and personal property and patrons' vehicles among threats to their personal security and welfare, welfare that non-service parking, parking facility. And whereas, extensive research conducted by NORC at the University of Chicago, an independent research organization clearly shows that by developing and implementing objective data-driven analysis of the most pressing and increasing complex health and safety challenges in our nation and community is necessary to, to be informed and sound solutions by these challenges, and there is no greater need for such data-driven analysis than in efforts by, I'm sorry, in efforts to reduce gun violence and injury, injuries resulting from the negligent possession and mishandling of firearms. Whereas, the development of a program by data-driven analysis of deaths and injuries resulting from firearm will yield current critical facts and related information about the underlying causes of injuries and death caused by firearms, which will better inform efforts to develop a policy for assessing needs and developing plans to prevent injuries and death from firearms. Now, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis, that this body shall advocate for the development and implementation of a pre-K through twelve, through grade twelve curriculum in city schools to educate the students by risk of handling firearms and to enable them to recognize situations that may lead to firearm injuries and identify trusted adults to address these issues and to make safe choices, combat negative peer pressure and resolve com- conflicting non-violently within the aim of reducing the trauma, injury and death suffered by children, and to share this curriculum and methods for its implementation with agencies and community-based organi- organizations. Be it res- be it further resolved that the Board of Aldermen will undertake and support efforts advocating for the twenty-second judicial circuit to prioritize firearms-related cases all over other ca- all over other cases. Be it further resolved, the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis will undertake efforts to strengthen the requirements of the city's ordinances governing the keeping of firearms in undentended vehicles and reporting of firearm theft by increasing the penalties for violence. Be it further resolved, the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis will undertake legislative efforts to, to develop new permit requirements for surface parking lots to reduce crime and firearm theft in particular. Be it further resolved that the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis will advocate and support the efforts of the St. Louis City Circuit Attorney to implement a gun violence intervention unit to address gun violence and its underlying cause that will identify priority offenders or cases involving gun or gang violence focusing on those individuals behind percentages, percentages of crime in the city, implementing an arrest alert system that immediately notify prosecutors of arrests involving violent in, violent individuals to better inform prosecutors in deciding whether elevated charges may be appropriate given the circumstances. And with drafting bail applications and making appropriating, appropriate sentencing's recommendation, identifying applicable conditions of release and provide timely notice, notice of, of debrief, debriefing opportunities, engaging in different options for the gathering of intelligence and improve the investigation of cold case, of cold cases. And be it further resolved, the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis will advocate, will advocate, advocate for resources of the creation of neighborhood embedded prosecution, a model for improving public safety by bringing prosecutors out of their office and into neighborhoods where they learn firsthand about communities' unique concerns and public safety challenges and thus better serve the better serve the public. Be it further resolved, the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis will av- advocate for creating a police prosecutor partnership gun violence intervention unit mainly based on efforts and other jurid- jurisdiction to reduce gun violence. Members of the GBIU will in- include prosecutors, criminal analysis, partnering law enforcement agencies and other criminal stakeholders. The GBI initial goal is the institutionalized, standardized intelligence gathering and sharing to concentrate resources on reducing serious and gun violence-related incidents and identifying those involving chronic vic- victims and offenders. The project objective includes enabling standard, standardized data collection and methods and protocols for the GBIU and partners, training, crime analysts, and the latest technology to identify critical victims and offenders, targeting those actors for aggressive pre- pre-suitorary law enforcement and community-based response facilitating collaborative development and execution of evidence-informed strategies aimed at reducing illegal shootings and assessing the impact and final project evaluation and adjusting responses accordingly. A key element of GBIU mandate is to make more effective use of the vast amount of information gathered from thousands of cases prosecuted each year by the office. Previously, the knowledge acquired through the investigation, investigation and prosecution of street crime cases was not centrally organized and analyzed. After implementing the GBIU, the office can focus vital resources on crime, crime drivers. Be further resolved that the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis will work to mobilize and engage with partners and allies to ensure the development and implement, implementation of all aspects of this gun violence initiative, initiative in the spirit and, and memory of Damian Cortez Baker, introduced this sixteenth day of September, twenty-twenty-two, the honorable Joseph Bacaro, twenty-third ward, Alderman.
All right, thank you, Sharita. Take a drink of water.
Uh, thank you.
Auburn from the twenty-third, you should take Sharita to dinner for that long.
I know, well, in, it, it, it covers a lot, and it opens up a lot of discussion that, uh, I'd like to take up, so I, uh, we're gonna, I would.
Would you be asking for unanimous consent or assign this?
No, 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 assign it, no, so I'm just saying right now, I'd like to move this to public safety.
Make a motion, sir?
I'm making a motion that we move it to public safety.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Alderman twenty-third, second by Alderman twenty-fifth, that we assign Board Bill, uh, resolution one oh six to public safety. Any discussion? Hearing none, uh, all in favor say aye.
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 Ayes have it, motion carries. Sharita, please assign resolution one oh six to public safety.
Oh, noted.
All right, we'll skip.
That's the extent of our three in a resolution.
Thank you very much. She will skip, uh, twenty-two miscellaneous and unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements, time, place, and dates.
Tuesday, September twentieth, twenty-twenty-two, Health and Human Services will have a committee hearing at eleven AM via webinar. Wednesday, September twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two, Streets will have a committee hearing at ten AM via webinar. Public Safety will have a meeting at one PM via webinar. Thursday, September twenty-second, HUDs will have a meeting at nine AM via webinar, and Friday, September the twenty-third, full board meeting, ten AM via webinar. That is the extent of the announcement.
All right, any other announcements? I see no hands up.
I.
All of them, all of them from the fourteenth, you're recognized.
Yes, I would like to invite everybody, uh, to come to the, uh, Mexican Independence Day celebration on Gravoy, uh, between Taft and, uh, Osceola, I believe it is. Uh, come by, and that's Sunday from noon till eight. Um, come by and enjoy some wonderful Mexican delicacies and, uh, maybe a margarita. Um, you're welcome to come board and enjoy yourself. The other if, uh, thing going on in Bevo is, uh, Shakespeare in Bevo, which will be performed on Thursday, the twenty-second, Friday, the twenty-third, and Saturday, the fourth. So put that on your calendar. It should be, uh, pretty interesting. Hope to see you there. Thank you. That's all.
All right, so, thank you, all the woman. All the woman from the second, you're recognized.
Thank you, Ms. President, members of the board. I would like to invite everyone out to the second ward for, um, the Chain of Rocks Community Association Annual Car Show. It will be held on Sunday from noon to four at the Chain of Rocks. Um, since there is construction going on on the Missouri side, you will have to go to the Illinois side to enter. This will be, um, a fun event, so please come out.
All right, thank you very much. Auburn from the twenty-fourth, you are recognized.
Thank you, uh, President. Uh, just, uh, read earlier this morning that a, uh, St. Louis firefighter was injured, uh, in a house fire on the south side, and just wanted to wish him a speedy recovery.
All right, thank you, sir. All the one from the eighth, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I wanted to invite everyone out to South Grand, and on Saturday, there's the South Grand Fall and New Fall Fest and Fall and Music Fest, sorry, that adds a little confusing here. But if you've ever been down and shopping on multiple side streets off of South Grand, performances at Ritz Park starts at eleven tomorrow, goes all day. Um, welcome down. We've got lots of, lots of fun fall activities, um, starting down in the eighth ward and around South Grand, um, starting this weekend. So, thanks and hope to see you out there.
All right, thank you. All the woman from the twenty-seventh, you are recognized.
Uh, thanks, Mr. President. Uh, I wanted to, uh, announce to everyone, Prostate Cancer Month has kicked off. Uh, Melvin Shah, he, uh, his excitement, Cancer Center will do their walk in Tower Grove Park tomorrow. And so it starts at, uh, nine o'clock AM, and it'll be in Tower Grove Park. So I just wanted to remind everybody, this is Prostate Cancer Month, and so men do not forget to get tested. It's not scary. It's real easy. It's just taking some blood. So just make sure you take care of yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Auburn from the twenty-eighth, you're recognized.
Thank you. Uh, just wanted to, first of all, let everybody know that the Great Forest, Forest Park Bloom Glow is this evening, and the race is tomorrow. So, um, it's always a great event, um, come out tonight, and it's always cool to just look up and, and watch the balloons, um, tomorrow. Uh, also, um, I wanted to say that we are also kicking off the Hispanic Heritage, um, National. So I think that Alderman Howard brought up the, the event in her ward. I think we're going to be seeing a lot of events, um, in the coming weeks to celebrate Hispanic heritage, so I invite everybody to participate. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All the woman from the nineteenth, you're recognized.
Oh, I just wanted to announce, uh, a big thank you to the Cranberriesburg Foundation and all other participants and art entities that supported intersection uh, music at Grand. It was, I know we had over nine thousand people that attended, and it was a great event, uh, to have every type of music. uh, to have every type of music displayed and enjoyed. And so again, I just wanted to say thank you. That foundation spearheads a lot of great things in the, uh, artistic world. So those who normally would not have an opportunity, uh, they can express themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other hands? Seeing, okay, Alderman from the twenty-first.
I had a mute problem. Okay, so, uh, tomorrow, uh, Saturday, the, what is tomorrow, the seventeenth? Uh, from noon to four PM, Wake Up St. Louis will sponsor an event in O'Fallon Park. Uh, and this is a, um, stop the violence type activity. There'll be food, games, a thousand-dollar grand prize. And so we want to encourage everyone to please come out and support and bring awareness, uh, to the community about the level of violence that we are experiencing. Additionally, I would also just like to take a moment to thank my Recorder of Deeds, uh, family and Michael Butler for all of their support and, uh, recognized by twenty-first ward residents, uh, who are among the best people here in the city of St. Louis.
All right, thank you very much, Alderman. Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mister President. Um, I forgot to mention the holidays, uh, earlier in, uh, our session here. So, since I missed it earlier, I'll go ahead and do two of them. Uh, today is National, um, uh, Tradesman Day. Uh, so I would like to take this moment to recognize, uh, my good friend, colleague, uh, the Alderman from the nineteenth ward who seemingly has held every, uh, position in a trade organization. Uh, you know, from, from all her breadth of knowledge and everything else. So, I wanna take the moment to thank everyone, uh, who is a, a tradesperson, uh, tradeswoman, tradesman, uh, on this special day. And then also today is National Play-Doh Day. Uh, so I think we can all, uh, take an opportunity to maybe, uh, go over to the Alderman from the twenty-third ward's home and, uh, have a playdate with him and Play-Doh. So, thanks so much for, uh, indulging me this afternoon.
Thank you.
Also, I, I don't believe anyone mentioned that, uh, this weekend is the, uh, Great Forest Park Balloon Race. Uh, it's a wonderful event here in St. Louis. Uh, tonight is actually the Balloon Glow and the race starts tomorrow. So if you haven't been, it's a really wonderful event. Uh, and, you know, take your friends, take your family and enjoy the, the balloons, the company and the beautiful parks that they're, uh, taking place in.
All right, thank you, sir. Any other hands? Alderman from the twenty-sixth, that's a first. Okay. Um, uh, nice. At this point, uh, I can only recognize all the people. I see a hand up, but it's not a, an older person, so I cannot recognize you. Uh.
My, my hands up.
Uh.
Alderman Bosley.
Alderman Bosley. Okay, well, it's listed as Janice Mohammed Key on there. I'm sorry, sir.
Oh, God, that's, all right.
Alderman, you're recognized.
Thank you. Uh, we have a criminal justice, uh, forum coming up at Herbert Hoover Boys and Girls Club this Saturday at ten thirty. I know we talk a lot about the crime and the di- different issues that are plaguing the city. So, you know, it's good to have folks in the room that we can ask questions, get answers for and figure out what the residents also in the city can do to kind of help those individuals who are in those jobs, um, kind of get to where it is that we like them to be, uh, from the community standpoint. We can do our part while they do our. So, just giving everybody the invitation to come on out and spread the word. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other hands? Little more? All right, also this Sunday, if you're so inclined on the Hill Neighborhood, the American Legion Post number fifteen at the corner of Bishop and Edwards, having their annual fall barbecue. Some walk over the brightly colored crosswalks and get to the American Legion Post. Uh, starts from eleven till six. I'll be out there at six in the morning, starting the fires if you want to come by and have a beer. Thank you very much. And with anything else, no other hands. Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you are recognized on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Mister President. I move that we excuse the older persons from the first, sixth, and sixteenth wards.
Entertaining second?
I'm here. This is the sixth ward Alderman. I'm here.
Oh, she showed up.
I, uh, I am in my motion, I am in my motion to, uh, excuse the older persons from the first and sixteenth wards. My apologies to the Alderman from the sixth.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Alderman twenty-fifth, second by Alderman from the twenty-seventh. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Oh.
Eyes have it. All right, Alderman twenty-fifth, you are recognized on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mister President. I, uh, make the motion that we adjourn until Friday, September twenty-third at ten AM via webinar.
Entertaining second?
Second.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Alderman twenty-fifth, second by the Alderman from the second, that we will adjourn the meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.